We'll call them in to order seven AM. October eighteen, twenty twenty four, since the conference room. Almost.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And so you have some of the agenda before you, I'm looking for the motion to approve. The agendas. So long. Make a moment is there second? Are your seconds all in favor?
I.
Welcome in visitors, we have Dave Erwin, Mrs. Kelly, Mr. Greenmeyer, Mr. Dobitz. So, yes, and then all board members present. And then we'll move on to student outcomes.
Great, go. Yeah, so this month was goal number one, so we had our first assessment using STAR. Last month, and so we have that data to share with you and the public. But well, let's look at one point one and one point two. So one point one, we came in below target with our students. This this go around, but we're barely below target, so I hold confidence generally, you know, I. We have a false slide. But honestly, our false slide this fall wasn't as big as our normal false slide and. I, Mr. Dobitz will probably talk more to that and Mr. Lynch isn't here, but you have the individual data from each of those grades, so. This summer, we ran a summer reading program. We got a grant also to help us with that. I should get a ten thousand dollar grant. That's new. Was it ten thousand? Yeah, yeah, we got new computers, you know, so it helped us keep our our reading program, so. You know, thinking that that probably is. And and our our loss was significantly less than it's been in years before, and in fact, for one point two, we made a gain, so. That was that was really good to see because normally we expect that slide to happen. I I have, if you think about the kindergartners, though, it's their very first time that they they take this assessment besides in the screening in the. In the spring, but really, this is their first time of being in school, and so. Like I said in my response on my report to you is I have full confidence that those kindergartners, because if you look at historical. Our kindergartners gain ground during the school year as they gain knowledge, so that'll make a difference for us on one point one. What's next for us, we've purchased science of reading, you know, you know that, and in fact, today, we have, when I'm done here with the report. Mrs. Kelly and Mr. Greenmeyer are going to give you a reporter, share with you about CKLA that we bought with that grant, the high quality instructional material, the HQIM grant. That Gray wrote, we purchased that, so we're we're expecting to see that that alignment of that resource that we're using. Will support continued growth and skills attainment in those grades. We've scheduled professional development that are focused on STAR and Renaissance, our early, our late starts, I should say. On Wednesdays, we've been focusing on our goals and it's very easy to be streamlined on that, so we've been doing sessions with Renaissance. The teachers have been working on data. It's amazing to go into those work sessions because they're they're in groups, they're talking, they're they're looking at their data. I walked in the other day and one of the content area teachers said, did you know that we don't have interventions for, you know, so it's it was interesting to have those conversations where before the content area teachers weren't. Quite as involved in it, so that's what we we've been doing in a late start, so. Ah, related, like I said, we're laser focused on our goals and we're going to be looking at our data consistently throughout that year because of our late starts and because of our our dedication to that. That it's a priority. And then, if you look at one, one point three, we far exceeded our target. So, in fact, last night I sent an email to Gray and Jordan, and you're going to see this in math. This, again, some of it goes back to cohorts, right? So the cohorts that we had where we set really high goals and or targets, I shouldn't say goals, but. For the progress monitoring for math and reading had to do with some of the cohorts that we're going through, so now we're seeing those cohorts sliding up into the high schools, so. The ones that have a little higher achievement on our on our assessments, we're seeing the result of that, so that's what we're far exceeding our target, or at least that's part of what I'm hypothesizing is the reason why. So if you look at one point three, Mr. Lynch and his high school team, they revamped their reward system, because if you remember last year, we were thinking like motivation, what are we going to do? And they revamped that, and the kids have realized this and they're taking full advantage of it. I, that is just shocking, we looked at last year's and Gray might talk more to this, but we looked at last year's fall data and this year's fall data. An amazing difference. Just by, you know, tweaking a little bit of the things that we're doing, so. The ELA teachers have also spent a ton of time in the high schools reflecting on their priority standards and efficiency scales, and we're starting to see some of those positive results. What's next for one three, the high school students were also offered summer AR. Have as much. School, but. Generally offer it. Same thing, professional development on STAR and Renaissance, starting to force the teachers or allowing them time to look at the data. At the admin level, we're talking about possibly purchasing science of reading aligned resources and actually our high school teachers in ELA and junior high. At the SEEK level, SEEK is doing it right, Gray?
Yes.
Yeah, SEEK is offering science of reading training for junior high and high school, where before that hasn't been, so we're sending our teachers, our teachers are, we're requiring them to go to that training, so. They're going to the science of reading training paid for by us, and they'll be working on that this year, so we're starting to pull that up, but maybe looking at. Once they go through the science of reading training, possibly, you know, being able to align our resources even further up. And Mr. Lynch will be working with his team to determine a reward system for the NDSA, you know, taking what we learn from the STAR. And looking at the NDSA to hopefully see a difference in performance of our seven through ten students. So in the packet, you had a deeper dive on the data from Mr. Lynch, and you also had from Mr. Dobitz. And maybe I'll give Mr. Dobitz a chance if he wants to share something on his deeper dive.
Yeah, as you see, very similar to last year. This will show you how many students are in each level of the STAR. Assessment. The lowest would be the urgent intervention students that we need to address right away, and then the next would be just an intervention group that scored in the eleven through twenty fifth percentile. And then the twenty sixth through forty ninth is that on watch, and then fifty or above would be the at or above level, so our kindergarten group. Although there's no urgent intervention students, we do have a couple in that intervention spot, three of them, and then. Eight students there on the on watch, but again, we we feel very confident that those learners are going to gain ground very quickly. Historically, that has that has been the case, so once they're exposed to a full day of instruction. You know, we we talked about with the, I talked about with the kindergarten students or kindergarten teachers, you know, who went to. A preschool and then who went to a daycare that had a preschool and then who just went to daycare. And many of our students were in a. A daycare that offered preschool here in town. You know, some of the students in that on watch and intervention, we had a couple of students that just went to a daycare. And so, you know, once we, once we expose those kids to a full day of instruction, we we fully expect them. To gain ground very quickly, so. First grade, our first grade students who, for the first time, went through a full year of instruction in. The Super Kids resource and had both. Both of our teacher or one of our kindergarten teachers fully CKL or. Letters trained, and then now in first grade, both of our first grade teachers are fully letter trained. And that's that science of reading. Very intensive instructional training. You can see that that we're gonna we're gonna do very well in reading instruction there. First grade, very few students even in the intervention spot there, there's probably only two or three there, so. Second grade, two students in both the urgent and the intervention spot, we do have quite a few there in the on watch, and then. You know, thirteen students in the at or above there. And then third grade. Pretty similar there. Our fourth grade students have a mix of kids there in the urgent and intervention, and then a large group in the at or above. Fifth grade. And then our sixth graders. Total six. There it goes. You know, we're we're about twelve to fifteen students in that urgent intervention category, and then. The yellow or the the second category there, the the intervention category, we're about twenty seven or twenty eight, and then we've got. You know, fifty some students in on watch, and then of the vast majority are kids of our kids are already scoring in the fifty of their higher percentile, so.
One thing too, those kids that are some, you know, are all of our kids take this screening test, so it's even our kids that are on IEPs.
So with that letter string, what? What's the difference between that and everything that they've done in your past, like what is what is special about the letter string?
Um, so it's, let's see, they meet. They meet once a month, either in person or virtually, and then they have a, they have a. A course that they go through on their own time, it's about, you know, an hour and a half to two hours a week. Where they're online, doing learning on science or reading training, learning how to teach students how to read. It's it's very intensive, it really is, the amount of time that our that our teachers are putting into that is. Like I said, it's it's about two hours a week and then, you know, a full day during the, you know, once a month, and then. It it's. It's teaching phonics, it's teaching. How how to identify students that are struggling at a at a quicker, deeper level, and then, you know, what interventions are possible, and then how to. Interventions. Got three, three of our teachers that don't currently have it are in it. Our other kindergarten teacher and both our second grade teachers, so if if all of those teachers stay with us here through this year and next year, we will be fully K two. Letters trained, which I know no elementary school in this education, you know, regional education, so SEEK. No elementary would be able to say that except for us, so which would be a a great thing for us, obviously.
We also have all of our teachers in science of reading, they have been through the training, even if they're content area teachers, so. It's highly suggested, it's not required for every, but we do that with, we've made that dedication to that, that's what we're going to do, and even with the letter training. It's a specific program, but we we're seeing the benefits. I would trust our K, our teachers that have been through letters to assess their kids without purchasing any kind of assessment outside of our area, that they are able to assess very quickly. On very efficiently and formally assess and decide where their kids are and interventions that they need to do.
They learn, they learn how to do those interventions correctly to make sure, you know, that that we're identifying what the true struggles are of those kids. That are in those two areas that are urgent and intervention and on watch. And then the they they've learned what. What have to take once we've identified a problem.
So Jordan had his data in there just for you to look at, it's same format as as what Gray has shared with you. And wouldn't be able to answer specific questions if they, as far as classroom level, but I know that if you have those questions, then we can give those to Jordan, and then Jordan will. We'll make sure that you didn't answer to those, but you can see the seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth grade for STAR. Meeting, I don't know, when I first saw the data, I was like, almost fell out of my chair, I went to these guys like, oh, my gosh, look at this data. Where where was this last fall, so then that made those guys started to dig in deeper to compare the two, you know, between last fall and this fall, and it's. Amazingly, so.
What is true?
I think a big part of the high school is the motivation, right, there's here's here's what we're gonna. You know, they have the skills before, but before they didn't, you know, well, let's just get through this as fast as possible, well, now something is tied to it, you know, here's. And I hate to say that, we want to get away from those, you know, outside motivators, right, that that ones that are not intrinsic, but they are extrinsic, but. You're extrinsically motivated, right, and as much as it makes you cringe as a teacher because you want him to be intrinsically motivated, so then down in that lower or in the elementary, we work really hard to move from extrinsic to intrinsic, but we still offer extrinsic. You know, so I I and also, again, those cohorts moving through, I mean, we saw that because like, when I was working on math data for next month's meeting. We have really high for one point or two point two. And now two point two, we're not meeting that goal, right, because some of those cohorts have slid through, and now we're far exceeding our two point three target because those cohorts are sliding through. And you know, they're they're like, we always learn they're blueberries, we just get the blueberries that we get, you know, and some blueberries are, you know. Able to do, everything's just different, all the kids are different, so we just work really hard with the kids that we have, and we try to get them to reach the highest level that they can. Does anybody have any other questions as far as our report, and then maybe then we'll move to letting the teachers talk about CKLA and like.
Was there anything specific that you found? That eliminated that summer slide?
That's my guess or by golly, I don't know.
I mean, when when we. Looked at the numbers of students that came to read on a consistent basis, it was very similar to years past. I I mean, my my best guess is that. The the work that we did last year was rich enough and full enough that it stuck with them. Beyond that, though, there's there's real no, really no heavy indicator as to what. What was different besides the instruction through the school year.
I would bet that if we dug into the data and looked at each kid that came to summer reading, but every one of them not have had a summer slide. You know, but. Watch. Ability for them to read during the summer and to continue to enrich their vocabulary and, you know, still be doing that kind of stuff, so in order to maybe we minimize the slide for the summer. Okay, so you guys are kind enough to get up on their day off, I owe them breakfast next week sometime or whatever, treat or whatever. So, Mr. Greenmeyer and Mrs. Kelly teach ELA up in four, five and six, and their terror center works with them also in Torrey. There's some kids up there, but I'll let them explain, they're going to talk about CKLA, which is the. A whole week, just so people come up here so that you're on camera.
So, I'm Mr. Greenmeyer, this is Mrs. Kelly, we do four through six ELA, and we got a brand new curriculum. CKLA for four and fourth and fifth grade. And sixth grade uses the a program from the same company, but it's called Amplify. You can turn the.
So this is one of our students, he's just going to share a little bit of what we do in our. Two hour class period and show you some things that he does and any thoughts on it.
Okay, I'm gonna have to mess with sound here, so please excuse any feedback that I have.
So what our learner shared was the book and the iPad coincide, so sometimes we do it in the book, and we do it online. They have the choice to read it, we're doing a roll doll, his story called Boy, and they have the option to read it in the book. They have the option to go online and have it read to them. There's just lots of options, but in sixth grade, most of the assignments that we give are online. And that's why that little book that he shared, it, there's not a lot in there because he did it all on, he chose to do it all online. And then we screenshot those activities, whatever, Mr. Hunt, Mr. Greenmeyer and I decide we want to put into Empower. And then they just slide it in. So, speaking on a veteran teacher point of view, I I was very excited when Mr. Dobitz came to us and said, we're getting a reading series. Because for many years, we've been going just by the priority standards and picking and choosing resources. And now we have something, it's very rigorous in vocabulary, it's very rigorous in writing, I mean, we are doing skills. Already in September that we didn't get to till the end of the year last year, so I'm really excited to see. The change and and hopefully, I I believe that it's going to change, and we're going to meet our our goals a lot faster, because you can also. Modify the activities in there to what the kids need to know and modify it down. It also gives us an opportunity, excuse me, to go into our second hour and work with with this if we want to, and we also. Can do small group in our second hour on these C skills that some kids need more work on and challenge them. A rookie.
A rookie, right, so. I mean, just speaking from a rookie's. Point of view, one of the, my, one of my favorite things is it takes one thing off my plate, it helps me have guide rails for what I need to do in my class, is it out? Over this, talk about this point, and it helps me portray that to the students, the learners. The next thing that I really like about it is the writing and up on the board right now, this is an example of fifth grade and fourth and fifth grade, very similar. But it has a prewriting, which is on the left side, and then you use that prewriting to go into your writing on the right side. And then, just like Mrs. Kelly said, when you upload it to Empower, that allows me to annotate it and give feedback to the students, so. For example, on this one, we were working on dialogue and quoting, and every time you start a new line of dialogue with a new character in your writing, you're supposed to start a new line. They had one big chunk paragraph, so if I annotated this on Empower, I would say, hey, right here, you need to have a new line, because it's a new person talking. But as you can see, that's a lot of writing, and I think that's what a lot of learners miss, especially at the earlier ages. Any questions outside of what we shared here?
This might be more for Mrs. Kelly, since this is your first year, but have you seen the difference in those fourth graders coming in that have used that Super Kids? So that would be the first year of.
The the fourth graders that we have now.
They have not done that?
No, because last year was our first year, so it's our third graders currently that would have had that, does that make sense?
Yeah, I thought we said it two years ago, so. So that'll be interesting to see.
You guys being around?
Yeah, we're gonna be here.
We caught ELA together, and I remember, I can't imagine it, when we hired for that position down there and we didn't have a resource, it it is scary. Because I remember when I got the job, I was not a rookie teacher, I was a veteran teacher, and Vic and I had to do it together, and like, and you didn't have your resources, you know, I mean, I learned to really like that because I had the freedom. But it it's scary because you don't have those guardrails and, you know, and you are not prescribed, so, yeah.
So, one of the things that Mrs. Kelly shared was how much more rigorous it is, and we saw that too, and. And the other resources, Super Kids resource in K two, I remember talking with Kelly Gephardt, who is almost as veteran as Vic, not quite. But, you know, she said, and I remember it was in September, she said basically the same thing that Vicki said, we're doing things in September that we used to do in March and April. And so our kids are are just being exposed to that that rigorous instruction. And it's challenging them to to grow and and, you know, I I I'm just, I'm super excited about. What we're going to see at the end of this year, after just one year of this, and then, you know, many years down the road, when when we're sending kids. Through Super Kids, all the way through Amplify in sixth grade, and then we're sending them up to the high school. Who, and and they're all, you know, strong, confident readers and writers. When you modify that, does the program modify for individual kids?
You can, you can go in and modify. I mean. Mr. Greenmeyer and I are learning right along with the kids, there's a lot of. There's a lot of resources with this program, we're not even. Through all of it, it's just in the book, in the teacher's guide, online, I'm constantly finding new things, oh, I didn't know this was here. And so we're learning, and and we tell the kids that. We're learning right along with you, and we hope to be better prepared, there's nine units, I believe, in each grade. And so we're in unit one, personal narrative, but unit two, we hope to be better organized as far as what we really want them. To work on and then be able to pull other skills in and other, just really focus on it better. But yes, and then what's nice is with our two hour block, we can take that second hour or part of it and work small group. And Mr. Greenmeyer and I have been kind of sharing kids, we group them up on what skills they need, they can work with other kids from his class to my class and. Kind of gives gives us both the chance to see all of a class instead of just my five one and his five two or whatever. So we're we're trying things and and it's it's working out, it's coming better, we were kind of. So we're, we're trying things and, and it's, it's working out. It's coming better. We were kind of paddling upstream, but um, we're getting better at it.
So with that grant, we were also able to purchase um, the, the training aspect of it. So middle of August, we spent a full day being trained on how to use it. And then we have another training.
November thirteenth.
November thirteenth, we'll do a, a three hour training and then we have um, one more three hour block of training that we, we will be able to provide for our teachers. So we were actually able to partner with Jackal Streeter uh, to kind of share the cost of that training. So we're paying half, they're paying half, and then we're doing it online. So which is, is kind of a, a nice money saver for us there, but um, they'll be trained. Uh, it's, it's, this one coming up is, is going to be a, a good coaching session for them. Because now they, they know what all that stuff's like. It's not the first time they've seen it. And they'll be able to ask a bunch of questions to the trainer and give themselves a, a chance to grow there.
Just like our learner showed you that vocab app, in the fourth and fifth grade, there's a boost app. And they took a diagnostic and then it built them a pathway based on their skills that they need to work on. So we do that for 10 minutes a day, every day also with the fourth and fifth graders. And so that kind of modifies them also there. And you know, just like Mrs. Sell talked about, we need that motivator. It's the game piece, you know, they, the vocab app and the boost, it's a game, it's a quest. And they answer questions and then they get to play, I don't know, minute and a half or whatever of a game. So they, they like that piece.
I feel like most of them aren't keeping up with that pace.
That's one of the things we're going to get trained on because you do get data from the boost. Um, I just haven't figured out what it all means. So I'm excited for the training to see. You know, okay, why is, what do we, what do I do here? So. Thank you.
So we have a motion to accept the more progress monitoring. Um, next item to be superintendent guardrails and progress measures.
Hey, um, so I, in your packet, I included the guidance from Sue on that. The addition of the two guardrails that the committee came up with. And then also my progress measures. So um, from Sue guys as a board, you can either approve those new guardrails with the um, progress measures that I have come up with. Or you can choose to rewrite your goals to align with this and then we'll go back to the drawing board. So um, I guess the decision that you have to make is, do you feel like those guardrails align with the progress measures? Or do we need to go back and you need to amend the guardrails and, you know, go through the whole process again?
I think they align fairly well, but one thing, we can tweak these down the road if we need to.
The progress measure? Oh yeah, I think from what Sue said, and I think it might affect your um, your um, evaluation, you know, if we change them too much. But honestly, I'm at the point where I think we need to do what's best for us, right? So if we find that these, if I find that these are not working, I can go back and that's probably easier for me to adjust these, even though, yeah. I, these were, I mean, it wasn't super hard, but I mean, to me, it seems like that they will align and I, you guys are the ones that have to make the decision. But if these are a little more, I don't know if it's, I don't know, it would be the word, you know, it's very straightforward of this is what we're going to do in this.
But we, we adopt the guardrails and then we, the progress measures, the one, you know, should we change those and make sure? We need to make that decision as, as to if we want to adopt those today. I'll make a motion to adopt the guardrails. Maybe I'll make some motion to adopt the two guardrails as presented. Is there a second?
Okay.
Is that your seconds? I'm doing a roll call for this. No, all in favor? Fine, fine. Aye, motion passes. So we will move to um, the community engagement event. Um, we had a write-up in the packet. We met on, what date was that? Around the twenty third of September? Well, there. We had a decent sized turnout. Um, we had a lot of educators there, which was awesome. Couple of students that brought their families with. And we started out with a slideshow, went through everything. And then we had kind of an interactive session where I thought most people felt comfortable speaking up and asking questions.
Yeah, I think for the, most people that were there, I think there was good dialogue. I think they enjoyed the, the piece where they were able to, you know, designate what their thought, where they were at with things and what they wanted to see us continue with.
Right. So yeah, that was one of the activities that we asked. We gave them each three sticky dots and, and asked them to choose a student achievement goal or a guardrail that were um, of top importance to them. So you can kind of see where they are aligned. Um, number one for our, our goal seemed to be the most popular there that, that people felt the, the strongest about. Um, and over here, a little bit mixed with number one and three, I'm a student, or at the superintendent guardrails. And you can see here too, um, they find it important that the board continues the education for us as well. So awesome to see four out of the five board members going to the for F P A. I would have been there, but I haven't heard you. So we're back on that. Um, anything else?
I don't, you know, I don't know how you felt. I think some of them thought the conversation was going to be, you know, I, I don't think they really knew what to expect. So I think they were maybe hoping for more dialogue about other things, but um, you did a great job of just directing them that this is the, the topic that we're going to talk about.
Well, and I, I think it was a good opportunity to, to um, kind of lay it out there that what is a board decision and board action versus what is a superintendent or administration? Because there's a lot of confusion out there between whose decisions those are. Um, so I think there was I don't remember what some of the questions were, but just more lighting it back to that, that, that the board owns these goals and guardrails. But progress measures belong to our administration. The other thing with it too is we made it clear that this wouldn't be a one and done thing. This is something that's going to be at least annual moving forward, if not more. Hopefully the next time we'll get more, more people there, more feedback. Overall, for the first time, I think it went well. I have on them. I think.
Okay, I, I just noticed that. So this was, D was missing on the one in the packet, but the one that we published had D on it. I just put, I just didn't override those in the packet. So D was on the one that was published. So.
So with the board self-evaluation, there was a little bit of confusion coming up to it. Um, also with the handoff between Sonia and myself. So I kind of dropped the ball. I'm getting that ready for you guys. So if that's okay. We move that to November.
Was it Sue's?
Sue was also supposed to, I, I believe Sue was supposed to do it. And she was also supposed to be on her meeting today. To help with this. So um, I guess.
This morning too.
Well, we never got any from Phillock. Do we need a motion to table that?
No.
Well, let's just table that for our November meeting and I can't be too upset. I will go through, I have everything from the last couple quarters. I'll go through it and get that filled out and set it to all of you guys ahead of time so that you can kind of go through it on your own before we meet in November. Uh, moving on to item three, consent agenda. I'm going to motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. So your votes, your seconds? How's the seconds? Yvonne Nagel? Yes. Patty Carlson? Yes. Ron the day? Yes. Brian Sayer? Monica Heimbuck? Yes, motion passes by spirit. Item four, reports. Everybody got those reports? For information, items for discussion on possible action, N D S B A convention resolution.
Yeah. So uh, the North Dakota Construction Coalition, you know, we've been meeting and you know, all those. So there was a resolution that was created. We worked with Scott Wagner. Actually, Scott Wagner wrote it for us. And Scott Wagner um, yeah, is the lawyer, you know, he's the N D S B A or he is a lawyer. He works within the S B A. And he was actually um, that booklet that was, we got last year at N D S B A, they had the, about construction, that was Scott's work. And so he wrote the resolution for us. And um, we didn't get that resolution submitted, but at the convention next week, there can be resolutions that come from the floor. But there's a prescript, you know, you have to follow um, the exact steps. So uh, uh, the Bellfield Public School passed this resolution that I presented to you. And, and they are going to present it next week at, from the floor during the delegate. Now, which ones are in the delegates? I forgot. I had. So Sheilin Brain. So they're going to present it from the floor, but they need another school board to second it. And um, so that's why I'm presenting it to you, hoping that you will approve this today at the meeting. And then you will second it at that delegate convention. And so Bellfield's got it, their superintendent has, is following the steps. So they've got all the copies. Everything will be in place with the first session. Um, then that will be presented to them and then it will be voted on at um, the second session on Friday. And I can give you the exact steps. It's all in here. Shannon and I have gone through it to make sure. So so um, I'll read it. Just if your vote, board votes to bring a resolution to the convention floor for consideration by the delegate assembly, the following process must be followed. Have four hundred copies of your rev, uh, resolution ready to distribute at the close of the first business session on Thursday afternoon, which we thought, which Bellfield will have. At the second business session on Friday, the chair will ask if there are resolutions that were distributed on Thursday. At that time, a delegate from your board must come to the microphone and move the resolution, which they will do that. And then a delegate from a different board must make the second, which I'm hoping that you will do. Once a motion and second have been made, your resolution will be discussed and then it's voted on by the delegate assembly. So the delegate assembly could say, no, we're not going to, but I just can't imagine, there isn't standing resolution from school boards on facilities. It's just not as involved as this resolution is that I presented before you. So I'll leave it there for you guys to discuss or I suppose you want to take a motion in a second and then discuss it.
Okay, seconds. Is there any new discussion from them? Any questions on? Any discussion? Any discussion? Do we need a roll call on that, Shannon? All right, can you call the roll please?
Yvonne Nagel?
Yes.
Brian Sayer?
Yes.
Patty Carlson?
Yes.
Ron the day?
Yes.
Monica Heimbuck?
Yes.
Thank you. I will let Derek Curly, their superintendent, know that you will be there and you'll, you'll be seconding it. And there are other school boards that did pass it at their meetings, but we just said, because we're in the main cohort of them, that we would step forward and do that. So hopefully the floor will um, support it. I'm, I'm guessing that some of the schools are not going to, because this is, you know, pretty the schools are not really wanting. It'll be interesting.
Hey, future meetings, our regular meeting will be Friday, November fifteenth at seven AM. That's our superintendent evaluation. I will get that together and get it sent out to you guys with a deadline. I'll get sent back.
Just one thing, I'm sorry, Shannon's business manager evaluation. You did that last year in November. I don't know if you want to do that again. We have it on our, you know.
Yep.
It's not required by law, but.
Why don't we push that to a different month rather than like? Okay, I'll push it to December. Okay. Okay, so we'll do our superintendent evaluation at our November fifteenth meeting. I will send that out ahead of time. Get that back to me before our regular meeting Friday, December twentieth at seven AM. And we will push the business manager inauguration.
Yeah, improvement bill. I sent him.
Next. Did you have any gains?
Well, you know how it is.
He just wants to get paid. Is there any other business for the middle of the order? Okay, we'll call a meeting adjourned at somewhere between six AM.